Okay, so I'd like to reconvene the public session of the board meeting. Before I start, I'd like to just say on behalf of the board that it was happy to hear the news about Ann's operation and we all wish her speedy recovery.
Thank you.
If you're in touch with her, please let her know.
Be happy to do so.
First item we have is the approval of the draft minutes from the last meeting. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review those. If no questions, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Roy?
Actually, I'm returning it over to Dan for the budget presentation first.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Board's been working on the budget for the last two or three months. The administration's been working on it for about six months now, going back to October. This is the meeting where the board adopts the budget that's going to be put up for a referendum in May. And one more, if you can move to the next slide, Connie, you'll see where we are in the process. We're hopefully adopting a budget tonight that will be put forth to the voters. Early May, we'll have a budget hearing as required by, a public hearing as required by statute, and the referendum is, I think, third Tuesday in May. Next slide, Connie. And these are some, just cherry picked a few slides that the board has been looking at over the last few weeks and months. Our enrollment is fairly stable, has been for the last four years. Prior to that, we saw about a 12% increase over the four years before that. So we've kind of hit a plateau and are inching down somewhat. Next slide, please, Connie. Staffing is going to be relatively flat. We're actually adding three positions due to programs. One for elementary social emotional learning, as that's kind of a statutory requirement that came through this year, and also middle school science and high school social studies. And we're reducing a clerical position, at least eight tenths of one. So we're, staffing is anticipated to be up a little over two positions. Next slide, please, Connie. Tax levy cap calculation due to, primarily to our growth factor, which reflects growth in the assessment role. Our cap this year is not 2%, it's actually 3.4%. You'll see the budget soon, which is substantially below that, but this is, kind of reflects growth in the assessment roles in Bronxville over the last few years. And then also, the inflation rate was above 2%, so we also have a levy growth factor based on the CPI of 2%, which is statutorily capped at 2%, even though inflation was closer to 2.4, I believe. So all that goes through their formulas and gives us an adjusted cap of about 3.4%. Next slide, please, Connie. Our budget history over the last 20 years or so, particularly the last 10, has been fairly flat. You know, we like to manage our cap so that we don't, manage our budget so that we stay below the cap. We don't feel, you know, if we had a good reason, we would probably go towards, to the voters for a 60% override, but we'd like to avoid that if we can. And this year, obviously, not going to be necessary. As I mentioned, we're substantially below it. Next slide, please, Connie. And this is the last 10 years or so, a comparison with our budget and tax levy, which kind of mirror each other on the bottom two, at least until the last two years, versus enrollment. And you can see where I mentioned enrollment was a steep increase up until about 2015, and the CPI, which was also substantially higher than our budget over the last 10 years. This is the pie chart, which shows you that our salary and benefits are about 74 and a quarter percent of the budget. Those are all of the blue or purple shaded slices, and everything else is actually about 25% of the budget. And, you know, a lot of that isn't even discretionary. If anybody says, "Where do you cut the budget?", the place to cut the budget is in staffing. Next slide, please. Tap a few more times, Connie, to get them all in there. There you go. As I mentioned, our cap is about 3.4%. We're proposing a budget of about $49.5 million. We do collect revenue other than property tax, which is mostly state aid, special education and regular education tuition, property interest, and sales tax are the big chunks of that, about $5.5 million worth. So we're looking to raise about $43.9 million through tax levy and other resources. And if we, if we left it at that number, the tax levy change would be about 3.8 million. However, the board in the past has looked to conservative appropriation of fund balance to offset the tax levy. Last few years, that's been $500,000. The board is choosing to leave it at about that level because that's pretty much where our surpluses come in consistently over the last few years. So we're looking at an estimated tax levy of about $43,466,462, which is a tax levy increase of 2.64%. Versus the budget cap of about 3.4%, this budget is under the cap by almost $335,000. Next slide, please, Connie. The main budget drivers, as I mentioned, are personnel. The retirement incentive has led that, even with additional positions, to be almost flat. Contractual is up significantly because this budget includes almost $400,000 for a new PA system. I see a lot of students here tonight. They'll tell you that the B-Wing has absolutely no PA coverage. And we're also looking to get clocks, so the, right now, if you go through the building, no two clocks have exactly the same time, so hopefully clocks will be standardized. And also, on the BOSI's line, we're looking to include a full-time contracted director of security through BOSI's. And between that position and upgrading the PA system, we really think we'll be in a very good place security-wise going into next year. It's not that we're not now, but we're always looking to improve. You know, right now, we have, we contract out with Securitas for security management, but there's no real security professional. It's kind of divided between Mike Lee, myself, and Marcellus Lassane, and Roy, and none of us are really trained as security professionals, so we're looking to get a full-time security professional in here, which we think will be very important. So with that, with those budget additions, we're looking at about a 2.6% increase in the property tax levy.
Great. Thank you, Dan. So I think the next step in this process is for us to adopt the budget at the board level and then put it to the public vote in May.
Yes. And Connie has a resolution?
I can just read it. So be it resolved that the Board of Education, the Bronxville Union Free School District, adopts the proposed general fund budget for 2019 and '20 school year in the amount of $49,506,000. Can we get a motion to approve that resolution?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh wait, is it individual? Do we have to go one by one?
Yes.
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 Aye.
At this point, we would...
Still aye in team, Tom.
At this point, we'd like to have any members of the public comment specifically on the budget. If you have any comments or discussion on the budget, there'll be time later for other public comment on other topics, but no public discussion of the budget. Terrific.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Two things on superintendent report that I'd like to discuss and talk about. First is related to curriculum. As you know, we've been working hard on fulfilling the Bronxville promise. We have a number of teachers who've been engaged in professional development work. One of the areas of that work has been with a company called IDE Innovative Designs in Education. And so I know we have a couple of teachers here who are going to present to us tonight about some of the work that they've been doing, but before we introduce them, I'd like to introduce Dr. Ketke, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, to introduce a little bit more about IDE and the work that our teachers are doing, and then introduce the teachers.
So as Dr. Manasano said, we are very excited about taking the next step towards the Bronxville promise through our partnership with IDE Innovative Designs for Education. IDE, led by Dr. Nancy Sula, helps schools to redesign classrooms and strengthen instructional practice that support our students' ability to take ownership of their own learning through the establishment of a learner-active, technology-infused classroom, often referred to as a LADDY classroom. The three main pillars of the LADDY classroom include: an authentic learning unit, or ALU, which allows students to cultivate their need-to-know beyond the built-in motivation of grades, and aligns with our prior work on project-based learning; the structures and strategies to support both skill acquisition and application in order to solve a problem that requires both prerequisite skills and the application of knowledge. These structures and strategies include activity grids, where students can choose modalities of learning that work for them, as well as facilitation grids, where teachers monitor student progress of skill acquisition. Mini lessons, whole class instruction, and expert boards are also structures in a LADDY classroom that support differentiation. Finally, the third pillar includes teacher facilitation. In a LADDY classroom, the teacher can constantly gather formative assessment data and make informed decisions to support next steps for students, whether that means providing some remediation and reteaching, or providing extensions. They can pose the right questions to meet students where they are and challenge them academically. Perhaps most important in a LADDY classroom, the teacher can build strong student-teacher relationships, since you'll find that you're having more one-on-one and small group conversations with students. Beginning last summer, we had eight teachers participate in professional development to write curriculum according to IDE structures. During the school year, teachers were visited by a consultant on a monthly basis to provide coaching for implementation. We are currently recruiting the next eight teachers to join our second cohort, and believe we will be oversubscribed. Tonight, you will hear from two middle school math teachers who were part of the initial cohort, Rachel Sugarman and Brittany Brea, about their experience in creating a LADDY classroom. We look forward to their presentation and to sharing more about IDE at the Innovation Night in May with a keynote from Dr. Nancy Sula. So I welcome to the podium Rachel and Brittany.
Hi, I'm Rachel.
I'm Brittany Brea, and we're here to tell you a little bit about IDE, how well it lends to the Bronxville promise, and how we use it solely in our sixth grade math classes. So that's the Bronxville promise. We feel like it works really well with an IDE classroom. Sure. So we have included pictures of what IDE looks like in our math classes, so we feel that they are innovating, discovering, and creating. We will show you our ALU tasks, what we've asked our students to do throughout the year so far, and you'll see where they're innovating, discovering, and, most importantly, making something new from what they've learned.
So kids are working together and they're using technology every day. They're also having to make a lot of their own choices, which can be hard for students because they're used to, especially in sixth grade, getting a lot of, "Am I doing this right? Is this what I'm supposed to do?". So for the first time, they're really having to think about, "Okay, I have to make this choice based on a task and based on requirements." They're also thinking critically in order to solve the task, which we'll tell more about later.
And we're asking them to, with a lot of our tasks, think beyond themselves, beyond an 11-year-old. Sometimes we give them different personas, so a lot of their tasks are, "How would you engage the world being someone else?".
In addition, they're having to, they're taking more ownership of their learning because they are asked to become the experts. So if we're working with a small group, sometimes the kids will have questions. So they turn to one another and they say, "Oh, I'm an expert in this. I can help another kid in this area." So specifically, IDE has three pillars. It's about student responsibility, student engagement, and academic rigor.
And these are the 10 principles IDE has held by, and we feel, as math teachers, most importantly, learning from a felt need. Their first principle is really important in our classrooms because we hear a lot, "When are we going to use this?". And we hear it a lot less now because of the tasks that we're giving our students and asking them to do. We are definitely asking them to problem-solve. We're having different conversations with them now, and a lot deeper than we would if we were teaching traditionally. Like Rachel just said, they're very responsible for their learning, so in a few slides, we'll show you activity lists where they have to decide, "How are they going to learn the material? How are they going to practice it?". Which, for sixth graders, sometimes is difficult, but they've definitely risen to the occasion.
Also, individual learning paths have been very powerful in our classrooms because rather than, if a student understands something, they're able to move on with a task rather than waiting for us to give them another task to work on. Or if students struggling, then they have a lot of resources that they can use besides just the teacher. So here are some of the tasks that we developed. The one that we're working on right now is the road trip project. That's our, really, that's the one that we worked on over the summer, so we've spent the most time with this. It's a project where they, they have to come up with their own road trip, and they pick a character, like randomly from a bag. They pick a character, they pick a budget, which they did not like to have to do, and they pick the percentages of their budget that they can use on different, on the hotel, on the...
Their meals.
Their meals, and the attractions that they're going on. So it, over the course of this project, they're coming, using gas mileage, they're learning about different, about budgeting, they're adding multiplying decimals, they're finding unit rates, so, and lots of percentages. So they're doing much more, they're applying real-world skills and really working much more deeply than they would have done prior.
We started, this was our first one, the party planning project. They were in the eyes of a catering company, and they got to pick two events to cater. We gave them the serving size, so one of them was my field hockey end-of-the-season celebration, one was Miss Sugarman's family picnic. And they were also given recipes, and they had to decide, in order to make a high profit, would it make sense for me to double a recipe, or should I pick a different one that I don't have to have? So they dealt, again, with budgeting, but it really focused on fraction and decimal operations, but in a much different aspect than it would have been traditionally.
Also, the field trip project, we had them choose a field trip destination, and then using equations, they made graphs, so that, you know, if there's an initial cost, like an initial entry cost, but it goes up with each bus, they had to graph different equations based on their field trip. And then Math for Change is our preBL project, that they come up with a question, a statistical question, and then they survey the school, and then they create some sort of project that would elicit some change based on the initial question.
And our cereal box project talks about surface area and volume, but it really gets students thinking about the relationship between the two, which sometimes is difficult to relay. So what they do is they design a completely new cereal box. It's not a rectangular prism anymore, any shape they want. We give them magnet tiles to design with initially. And the surface area part is, we give them a price per square inch, so they have to talk about budget and how much it's going to cost to produce. But it also has to hold two cups of cereal, and we give them cereal in measuring cups so they're constantly doing a trial and error. "This was too big. Can we condense it a little bit?". That's another fun one.
And in all of these projects, there, we, as we, as we've been going, we're really seeing the final product really, really evolving. So in the first, we were getting a lot, the first project, there were a lot of Google slides, but now students are making movies to show their road trip. I don't even know how they're doing it, but they're making movies, they're making websites, they're, a couple of kids are making raps that have to do. It's really, it's nice that they're able to show their abilities in a different way, which is, you usually don't get the opportunity to do that in a math classroom.
So different elements of IDE that we implement are activity lists. I'm just going to go to this here for a second. This is an example of an activity list, and this is how they're going to learn or review a topic, and then how they're going to practice it. So what we do is we create, we try to have different modes for the students to choose from, whether they would rather learn or review a standard by a video, or would they rather read it from a website? Would they rather practice on Khan Academy, or would they rather have a worksheet in front of them? And what we do in both of our classrooms, we have a resource table where students can find physical copies. We also do some group activities where there's either matching, and everything's on the resource table for them. And this is what they have digitally to self-track and self-assess where they're at in different modes.
So this is another way for them to have their own individual pathway, and a way to choose, they're learning more about, about the topic, but also more about themselves and about how they learn best. There are kids who were struggling a lot, who realize that they, sometimes they're like, "I'm just going to go and listen to Khan Academy when I'm trying to explain something to them", because they realize that that maybe works better. And I don't take offense. Whatever gets the job done, it's fine. So they, so it's nice to see them starting to see, to recognize that, you know, that they are learners and take more responsibility for who they are as learners. Another structure that IDE helped us learn with, is rubrics. So rubrics are a lot of work, and we, so this is the one for the road trip project. The idea, this is a different type of, I forgot what it's called. It's a different type of rubric than we usually use. So it's an analytic rubric. So usually, rubrics are given to students when, in order just to assess, so they just know, "Okay, fours, 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 I did everything right". This one, students are, and they learn over the course of the year to go down the practitioner, sorry, it's blurry, but they go down the practitioner column, and they say to some, "Okay, I identified a destination and two stops. Okay, I did that. I identified two cars and I compared the miles per gallon. Okay, I did that." So this is kind of a roadmap that they can use to fulfill, to fulfill the task. So when, it helps us as well, I think. So when students are like, "I don't know how to do this", rather than, you know, going through it with them individually, you say, "Oh, well, where's your rubric? This is where, what do you think you've done so far? What can you do to move from the practitioner, or to fulfill the practitioner column, and what can you do to move over into the expert?". So the expert column has things like researching to add. So for the field trip project, no, sorry, road trip project, they, they can make a justification for why they would do that road trip, why this is a good use of money. And in order to move to an expert column, they might research what other people have done. Have they, has this been a positive experience for other people? Is it a good use of money? Is this the best price for the gas mileage? So it, yeah, it's a lot of work, but it helps kids to see, like, where they are now and where they can go.
And it's helpful having the rubrics with every task, because at first, even to me, that looks very overwhelming, and it does to our students. And when we first introduced a rubric, we said, "Okay, well, let's look at novice first and use it as a stepping stone to get to practitioner". We kind of explained to them, "We don't expect you to get to practitioner by day one, but it's a building block". And it's nice to see students taking the initiative and jumping to the expert column as needed. So this has been very helpful for them to self-assess, and then for us to also track their progress, and it lays everything out very clearly for them.
And then, just a note about how it's organized. There's a research component, there's the math that they're fulfilling, and then there's the presentation. So it helps us also think about, okay, what math is involved in the task? What are we expecting for them visually?
Two other aspects of the IDE in our classrooms are the expert board and the help board. The expert board, we've learned that, initially, we just had a poster board expert and picked a few students, asked them, "Do you want to be an expert?". And put their names up. And through trial and error, we learned it was really helpful if we put a specific topic next to them, so we'll ask the class, "Who wants to be our technology expert?". Because when we're working with small group, they always want to come over to us to ask us, but now they're getting more comfortable asking the expert. We've also categorized the expert board by topic, so who wants to be the expert with decimals for today? And the students know to go to that person. And vice versa, the help board, we actually, our training over the summer was run like an IDE classroom. So if we were working on something and we needed help, we would sign up and say, "I need help with this". And it just keeps things really organized in the classroom. We, it tells us who's asking for help, who has, who's on the expert board and who has mastered a specific topic. It just keeps things very organized.
The small group has probably been the best part of IDE for me. I think I work best in small groups of students. I think I am able to address their needs more completely. And something that, I used to have small groups, but the fact that every student in the classroom is engaged in a task makes it so I can actually concentrate on what the kids need me for. Also, planning ahead, knowing that I'm going to have small groups, is, it's been very helpful. I'll, we'll even put, like, the time that you're going to have a small group, and having kids write down who thinks that they need help with that topic. So sometimes kids self-select that they're going to, they need help with GCF or LCM word problems, and they, they know that they need help with it, but other times, I'll choose the kids who go on it for them.
And lastly, our benchmark lessons are things that we need to talk about whole group. So when we did the party planning project, we realized that we need to talk about profit with them, and a lot of them know what it is, but how do you calculate it? What do you need to know? So that was something that, throughout the long-term project, we picked a specific day and we said, "At 10 o'clock, everyone's going to stop what they're doing, we're going to do a small, almost like a small mini lesson on profit. Now everyone knows what, how do you find the profit? What do you need? Now go do that with your project." So benchmark lessons are when we stop in the middle, meet whole group, and then everyone disperses back.
Oh, that's it. That's it.
Are all the sixth grade classes doing this?
Well, all the math classes. Yeah, yeah. Both of us.
That's great.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you, guys.
For sure.
Thank you. As Mara mentioned, at Innovation Night, hopefully, Dr. Sula will be here for the keynote. Those of you interested, you'll be able to hear her talk about some of the stuff. But we think it's, matches real well with the Bronxville promise, and some of our teachers who are engaged are really doing some interesting work with students, so we, I think, we think it has a lot of potential for us. The other topic that I wanted to bring up as part of my report involves the, what we talked about in early board meeting, and that's the renaming of our track, the dedication of the, of the new track. If you recall, we did have a student approach the board about the thought of doing that. We've done some further research. I know it's something we've talked about informally, and I thought it best tonight to... informally, and I thought it best tonight to ask Karen Peterson, our A.D., to come up and talk a little bit further about what we might want to consider in the renaming of our track for one of our longtime track coaches. So I know we have some students here tonight too that are interested in hearing about it, or speaking about it perhaps as well. So Karen, the floor is yours.
Thanks, everyone. Good evening. We're hoping that the board will consider granting a resolution to name the renovated track project after our longtime coach, Jim Mitchell. Jim's been with us for 41 years as our girls' cross-country and indoor and outdoor track coach. In fact, he started all of those programs when he was a Latin teacher here many years ago. Jim has recently stepped down from his head coaching positions and is now assisting both the cross-country and indoor and outdoor track teams. I could talk about his accolades for a really long time, so I won't do that tonight, but just a few highlights. He's had 57 girls that have won All-American certification. His cross-country team has won 12 New York State championships. His cross-country indoor team and outdoor team has won 115 league championships. His cross-country team's won 35 section championships, the indoor team 33 section championships, and the outdoor team 36 section championships. And he's won five national championships. That's all great, and congratulations to him for all those accolades, but what stands out to me is how he makes track and field and cross-country what many people consider an individual sport, a real team sport. And I know a lot of runners have left the program here with a real sense of pride in their accomplishments, self-esteem, what they've taken from the track program, whether they were a state champion or the number 60th runner. He makes the, a quality program for all of those kids. In 2007, Coach Mitchell was inducted into the National Track Hall of Fame down at the Armory, and in 2013 was inducted into the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Hall of Fame. Two great honors. I know that there's a few, there's a bunch of track people here tonight, but I know there's a couple of girls that wanted to maybe speak a little bit more about Coach Mitchell and their experience, having been coached by him. So I invite them up. It looks like we have five runners.
Relay team?
We have the relay team and an alternate.
Hello. My name is Eve Balsaro, and I'm a junior at Bronxville. I don't know if any of you are familiar, but I actually came to a board meeting in October, and I spoke about this. So I'm not going to bore you with that again. Instead, I'm gonna have my teammates and my friends speak on behalf of Mitchell, so.
I just wanted to start off by saying that Mitchell is probably one of the, thank you, one of the most dedicated coaches I have ever worked with. I've been on the lacrosse team, I've done like a couple other things, but cross-country and track have probably been the best years that I've done a sport. And that's due to him and his unrelenting dedication to the girls' team. He's never wanted to miss a practice unless he's absolutely had to. He always gives every single girl an individualized workout, whether it's a sprinter, or a distance runner, or middle distance, it doesn't matter. He always has something in store. And he has spent probably more hours traveling to and from the track and to different track meets that I think it would be totally appropriate to name the track after him as his probably now first home, because he spends so many hours there. And we just really want to give him this last thing before he officially moves on, because of all the great hours he's given each individual girl. And there are so many things that each person who has graduated has gone on to do, especially in the college and collegiate running world.
Oh, my name's Emma Mandanas.
Hi, my name is Caroline Rashir, and I've been running with Mitchell for, this is my fifth year now. During my time at Bronxville, Mitchell has led me and my relays to states, to nationals, where we've acquired state titles and state records. Each year, Mitchell puts so much time and effort into the team and each individual athlete, from August all the way until June. He built this program from the ground up and has such, had, has had such a long and successful career at Bronxville. He started off running on the track with the girls until now, where he literally has to take the elevator up at the Armory so that he can get up the stairs. So he's been here quite a long time. If I wanted to list out all of Mitchell's accomplishments, I would probably need a 20-page-long stat sheet, but I will not bore you with those details. Mitchell is very well-known, not only in Bronxville, but in Westchester, the state, and the entire track world as a whole, including at the collegiate level. I'm excited that I will be able to compete at the collegiate level next year, and I definitely would not be able to do that without Mitchell's help over the years. Because so many coaches know Mitchell personally and his great success at our school, they know that he lays such a great foundation for building a successful collegiate runner. And this is definitely one of the big reasons that college coaches were interested in recruiting me, and many of them who I talked to went on and on about Mitchell. I believe that I am going to be the 12th runner that Mitchell is sending to run at Yale over his long career, and that is just one of the many schools he has helped send students to over the years, which has had such a profound impact on so many people's lives. Mitchell has brought our small high school so much fame, and the least that we can do is to recognize his efforts, just like many other people have in the halls of fames that he's been inducted into. So I hope that you can consider this opportunity. Thank you.
That was Caroline Rashir. And I'm Sabrina Mellinghoff, and I actually started running for Mitchell my freshman year. So that's later than Emma started. I mean, she didn't say this about herself, but she's been running with him for six years now. And my first season, I came in, I came onto the team just wanting to stay in shape. I didn't know what distance I would be running. I came in having never run a varsity race before. But by the end of the season, I had a school record under my belt, and I was lucky enough to run with some upperclassmen who I idolized, and we came in third at nationals. So in a couple of months, Mitchell turned me from nothing into an All-American. And that's, that's just my story, but I hope it goes to show what a remarkable, remarkable coach that he is. And track, track is a sport unlike others in that it is kind of individual. We have, right now, I know on the spring team, we have 50-plus girls. And unlike other sports, there is no bench that you can put them on. So Mitchell has this uncanny ability to tell where girls' strengths are, what events that they will shine in, and that has definitely played into his success. And one more thing that really strikes me about Mitchell is how strong he is, even in his age, emotionally. Like, I know that as we go through high school, girls sometimes go through things that are tough for them. Like, I went through a tough injury in my sophomore year. And the first, the very first day, actually, that I started feeling symptoms of my injury, I went right to Mitchell. And he immediately diagnosed me, but I was, I refused to accept that. So I kept running for two months until it turned out that he was right. And I was distraught, but then he would talk to me about Latin, he would talk to me about other things to get my mind off of track. So I just wanted to put in there that he is not only a strong, he's not only a shrewd coach, he's also a very strong emotional coach.
Hello. My name is Natalie, and I'm a senior here at Bronxville. I've been running for seven years, but only two have been with Mitchell. This is because I didn't grow up in Bronxville, as I transferred here my junior year. I know what you're probably thinking. Why would someone transfer high schools voluntarily, going into one of the most difficult school years? This is because of Bronxville's track team. I wanted to be a part of a team that was the right fit for me, and with my parents' permission, I knew I wanted to come to Bronxville. Bronxville has been one, has, sorry. Bronxville has one of the most reputable track teams across the country, and this could be attributed to our head coach, Coach Mitchell. He is a coach that is not only known in Westchester County, but a coach known nationally. He has given so much to his athletes that we want to be able to commemorate all of his hard work by being able to name the track after him, and we hope you consider that.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you all for your time, and I hope that you'll consider that we can give back as a community to Mitchell and all of his accomplishments. Thank you.
So on behalf of all of our present runners and our previous runners from the last 41 years, we want to thank the board for this consideration. Sure.
Which Rizzo are you?
My name is Alex Rizzo. I'm captain of the boys' track team. And just some of our accolades, accolades here. We're amongst All-Americans, national champions, state champions. Personally, I'm going to the Naval Academy next year. And I owe that to Jim Mitchell. The man, the man is an absolute legend, and he has the Midas Touch. I've never seen a coach more incredible than that man. He can turn any average runner, any athlete into an All-American, national champion in one or two seasons. Like, I've never seen anything like that in any sport. So just for personally, it's, it's been amazing to run on the same track that he's been coaching on. And on another point for me, my family owes so much to him. My sisters are both All-American runners under his leadership. Me and my brother and my team owe it to him. And we really want to see the track and the field named after him. I think he's the most deserving person in the school. So, yeah. One thing that's kind of unique about Bronxville is that we have such astonishing track, both track teams, the women's and the guys' teams are both phenomenal. In the last two or three years, our track has obviously been a little beat up, so we're really happy that it's being rebuilt. And we also don't have any like trails around here anywhere to run, so all this just goes back to how the success of both teams have come up. And it's really been to our coaches, and mainly, like, it's been Jim Mitchell who's done all this. Ian Clark, who's our coach, came on two years ago, and it's really clear that Jim immediately sort of coached him on how to coach us. And in two years, we've got five All-Americans and four national champions, which is pretty astonishing. So I really do feel like naming the track after Jim would be very appropriate.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jack Kuchansky. I'm a senior here at the school, and I've been part of the track team since eighth grade. Throughout that time, I felt immense support from all of the coaches, including Coach Mitchell, even though he isn't even my own coach. You can see the passion that he has for the sport. It's infectious. He can just, he has this unique ability to get others as excited about track and running as he is. And he's built the girls' track program since its very origin. He's been here 41 years, as some people have said, which is, it's just a crazy amount of time, and it goes to show just how much he loves the sport, to be able to stick with it after all these years. And at this point, as it has been for several decades now, it's one of the strongest track programs in the entire country. In fact, this year, there were five girls' and relays that made it to nationals. And really, he's just been a role model for all of us, and he is, he has, he's just a uniquely talented coach that you really never see anywhere else. He's a standard of excellence, and he's helped all of us to reach our full potential. And all at the same time, he's made track fun, and he's really made the team stick together and really live as a family, rather than, rather than as a group of individual runners, as it is at so many other schools. And it would really mean a lot to us to name the track after him. After all that he's done for us, we feel very indebted to him, and it's the least that we can do. So, thank you.
So my name's Seamus Waters. I'm a senior here as well. And I don't know Mitchell all that personally, so what I'm gonna tell you isn't my story, it's my sister's. And I checked with her, and I made sure that it was okay. And she wanted me to express that. She wanted me to fight for this. My sister, most of you probably don't know. I'd like to think most of you know me. I feel like I've done enough of community to get there. Karen's my neighbor. But not really many people know my sister. And when she was at Bronxville, she didn't have the time that I or my friends had. It was a lot more tough for her. When she was a freshman, she was questioning herself and her sexuality growing up, and Bronxville was a tough place for her. But she joined the track team, and no insult to her, but she's not an athlete. She wasn't very good, and she didn't know how to run, but my dad forced her to be on the track team, and it didn't help her all that much. But Mitchell was always there for her, and she ended up transferring. And every time she comes back to one of my meets, Coach Mitchell knows her name, and he sees her, and he hugs her, and he talks to me about her all the time. It means a lot to me, because a lot of teachers in the school who've taught her, when they go around the class on the first day, they say, "I had your sibling, I had your sibling, I had your sibling." None of them ever remember my sibling. It hurts me. But when I see Coach Mitchell remember her, I know that she can look back at Bronxville and see that her time here wasn't in vain, and she had a great man to look up to. And I just want there to be a place for her to go when she comes back in 40, 50 years and says, "Maybe Bronxville wasn't so bad. I remember all those days I spent running with Mitchell and how much he meant for me."
I'm Tommy O'Connell. I'm a senior as well. And I didn't, I didn't know Mitchell well at all either. I actually have never spoken to him, to be honest. But his commitment to this team is beyond measure. We would go to East Sessor, because of our track, each Tuesday and Thursday, and he would just always be there. He would meet us there every single day. And I'm sure the girls really appreciate the commitment he gives to this team. Yeah, thank you.
And we want to thank everyone for sharing their stories about Jim Mitchell and the board for their consideration.
Thanks very much to everybody who came and expressed their views. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And just so the board knows, we will be introducing a resolution next month on behalf of the track renaming.
You can stay for the rest of the meeting. It's a lot of really cool stuff.
It's the highest attendance in like five years.
That's all right.
They must be sprinters.
Dr. Kelly, I think you're up.
Record time.
Thank you. I just want to thank Brittany and Rachel again for taking the time and sharing with us their commitment to IDE and how that supports the Bronxville Promise. And we'd be remiss not to mention that the Bronxville School Foundation has been tremendously generous in helping us see that training and really the redesign of the classrooms. So I wanted to make sure we had that opportunity to thank the foundation. I also want to thank the community. We had a couple of situations last week that were very difficult and trying for many of us. It included the fire in the apartment building off of Palmer, where we have a number of staff members who live in that courtyard area, as well as some alum who lived in the building. And it was tremendous, it was heartwarming to see how our community comes together, to help out those who were affected by the fire, and to just ensure that everybody was whole and had what they needed. In addition, we had one of our non-residents, special education students wandered off and was not found for 24 hours. And this was, okay, of age 20 years. But again, another moment where everyone just really came together and, and supported one another. So I wanted to thank the community. You have a number of resolutions before you this evening. They include parent leaves, they include... They include, um, uh, parent leaves, they include, um, an overage, some revisions to our team leaders and middle school advisors based on leave replacements. Um, we have the first of what will be a few new hires as a result of the, uh, retirement incentive. In addition, we have some substitutes before you this evening, teachers, teacher aides, and clerical, as well as some resignations. Um, in addition, you have, um, some new coaches, which have resulted in a revised spring coaches roster. Um, so I'm asking you to consider resolutions A through U.
Can I get a motion to approve resolutions A through U?
Move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion, no questions? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlin, I think you're up.
We'll start with the, uh, current year budget update. Let's see. I'm still projecting a surplus, uh, which is now approaching $400,000, roughly equally from revenues and expenditures. Uh, as the adopted budget calls for about half a million to be appropriated for offsetting the tax levy for 2019-20, the impact on year-end fund balance and reserves should be fairly neutral. Uh, if anything, I would anticipate the surplus rising a bit as we, uh, halt current year purchase orders in April and begin closing out, uh, the open POs. We always rise from there. Uh, additionally, uh, the board has in front of it, um, the risk assessment update done by Acume Partners, um, and recommended audit plan dated February 2019, and the 2018-19 IT, uh, uh, information technology risk assessment update performed by our, uh, Acume Partners as well. We're required by law to update our risk assessment annually and perform an internal audit in a, uh, concentration area as well. Uh, this function, uh, has been a for, uh, performed by Acume, uh, under the supervision of David Moran. The document and the proposed focus area have been circulated among the audit committee, uh, as virtually nothing has changed regarding the risk assessment. Uh, the committee recommends acceptance of the updated, uh, risk assessment and the approval of information technology as the focus area for internal audit this year, uh, as it's been over five years since the last IT audit, and, uh, boy, this stuff changes all the time. In fact, we probably have at least three new, uh, information technology systems in the district since then. So, uh, we're recommending IT.
So, any commentary from folks on the audit committee?
No, I think you captured it well.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion to accept, um, the recommendation of the audit committee and the risk assessment for the 18-19 year, and then the, uh, focus for next year. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Uh, one financial action item this evening, that's the contract for our insurance consultant. Uh, again, they've been invaluable dealing with, uh, flood insurance, both procuring it and in dealing with the claims. Uh, hopefully next year, there will be no claims. Uh, the fee for the, uh, for the consultant remains the same, so we're looking to re-up it for another year, and I think, you know, we're, I think he's going to work a little closely with the finance committee over the next year regarding, uh, moving forward of the insurance. So, I think we'll, we'll need his input.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve the appointment of?
Move.
Great, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, uh, to a facilities update, you know, all the track people left, and I'm going to talk about the track. Uh, we'll start with the pumps. Uh, you know, timing is everything, and we're probably going to miss what would have been perfect timing to get these pumps to arrive here during April break, but they're probably going to come the week after break, but, you know, we can deal with that. Um, it's probably a two-to-three-week process, process to get them installed once everything is on-site. But, you know, we're going to lose, I think we, between seven and nine parking spaces during that time, but we can deal with that. Um, and we'll get them in as soon as we can. Uh, Chambers Field is moving along. Uh, I, you know, I wish these people would have left 10 minutes later, but, uh, we're somewhat delayed in obtaining the track layout because it's basically Jim Mitchell's track. It's going to be a 400-meter track again, I thought they would want to know that. Uh, which is fitting it, a 400-meter track on our little postage stamp back there was extremely complicated, uh, and it's cost us a little bit of time, but if we're going to name the track after him, it's a good thing that it's going to be his track. He and, uh, and, and Coach Ryan were consulted every step of the way. Uh, and although it doesn't impact the installation of the field, which should come together in April, the installer, installation of the track will most likely be finished in May. We're hoping for the whole area by Memorial Day. Um, there are some change orders for discovered conditions regarding collapsed drainage replacement, installation of the shop hood area, which was, uh, left out of the original plan, changes to the track layout, as I mentioned, the batting cage and Christmas tree lots, subbase restoration, and, uh, the addition of, uh, uh, one more long jump pit, uh, where one of the, uh, pole vault landing areas is. Um, better to have two long jump pits than two pole vault landing areas, I guess long jumping is a little more popular, so that we're making that change, uh, from the current layout, uh, as requested by the coaches. Um, the, uh, facilities committee is going to meet in early April to discuss all of these changes, and it's, uh, it's really important to note that any of these changes, uh, that are going to cost us money will be more than offset by, uh, credit for repaving, which we thought we were going to have to do, but, uh, you know, the pavement is pristine and is good for another 10 years, at least. Uh, so it'll go mostly undisturbed, so we're going to get a lot of money back for that.
Dan, Dan, just on that, that, that relates to the foundation and, and some of the, what is perceived as inactivity on the project for some of the winter months, we didn't have to rip it all up?
Yeah.
And replace the foundation, right?
Exactly.
I think it's important to point that out.
Exactly, and, and, you know, the, they're out there now, uh, taking off the turf, and they actually intentionally left the turf in place during the winter to protect the subbase. Let's see, and, uh, something that was discussed today that we're, we're hopeful about is that, uh, basically the Christmas tree lot is almost done, it's, it's ready for turf. So, when the turf gets here, we might be able to get that back a little earlier, so, uh, it'll help Karen with, uh, you know, her magic tricks on finding places for people to practice. Um, now, uh, the next exciting thing we have coming up is the bid opening for Phase Two of the Bond, uh, the Bond Project, uh, which is Wednesday, March 27th. Uh, in all honesty, I'm not sure what to expect. The walkthrough wasn't greatly attended, but we have a decent amount of plan holders. You know, we've had a lot of contractors in here in the past, so I'm hoping that a lot of them already know our buildings and didn't feel the need to come to the walkthrough, but, uh, we'll see. Uh, and related to that, at the request of the GCs who have been through, uh, they suggested that we, uh, schedule, reschedule the library bid opening, which was supposed to be the same day, for a week later, because they felt, uh, the winner of the, uh, the big project bid would be, bid more aggressively on the library project, knowing they were going to be here, which sounded like a good suggestion to both us and, uh, land associates, the architects, so we're going to do that. We're extending that into the first week of April. And as I mentioned, uh, facilities committee will happen before the break and before the next April meeting, so hopefully, uh, we'll have some more good news at the next April meeting.
Great. A lot going on. Uh, no facilities action items tonight?
Nope, no facilities action items.
Okay. Any committee reports or, um, any other items at this point? Oh, we have a policy review. Okay. So, we have a number of policies that we, um, need to do a second reading on as well as, uh, rescind. So, um, I don't know if you guys can read that, but there are four policies for a second reading which we need to vote on. Um, the, uh, district meetings and election, the code of ethics, admissions with regulations, and health services with regulations are four. Can we approve all of these together?
Yes.
Yeah. So, can I get a motion to approve, um, those four policies that are shown on the screen?
Move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. There are two that are up for, uh, to be rescinded, the public budget hearing, publication of the budget, and the voting on the budget. Can you give a little background as to why?
Because they're covered in other policies.
Great.
Uh, already, so they're just repetitive.
Terrific. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the rescinding of 6120 and 6130? Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Action calendar, the next board meeting is, uh, in April, absent, and, and, and unscheduled one, and then at this point, I guess, we welcome public discussion. I think Mr. Katz is in Washington, and I think Ms. Agnella is also probably in Washington. So, anybody else would like to get up and take their place and?
Oh, that's tempting.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to, uh, dismiss the meeting?
Move.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.